Call the meeting to arrest clerk to call roll.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor pro Tim Marshburn?
I'm present.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton and Councilmember Vance?
Here.
Now I have a pledge of allegiance by Alma Vance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He may say. We'll have an invocation by Alma Vance.
Let us pray. We thank you, your heavenly Father, for allowing us this opportunity to serve. We thank you, God, for what you have done, how you continue to bless and to keep us and provide for us. God, we thank you for this opportunity to be able to stand before your people to do your will. God, we ask that you get our minds and our hearts to be focused on the things that are uplifting and pleasing in your sight. We thank you, Father, for all that you've done and all that you do. We all say amen.
Okay petitions and comments, time on the agenda. If anyone wants to address the council on an item not on the agenda. If you wish to address the council, please come forward, take your name and address. Adoption of the agenda.
You've got a closed session. Is that right, Bill?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I believe it's on there.
Move to approve?
I think so.
Second. Close discussion, all in favor, vote pass and aye.
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 I see a, excuse me, Mayor, I see a couple of folks that look like they might be confused about whether they should have spoke or not. So that was four items that are not on the agenda, petitions and comments. So are you here to speak on an item that's on the agenda? Or?
Yes, for rezoning.
Okay, okay, so you can wait till that appropriate time. Okay. I saw you asking questions and looking. So, okay. Okay, all right. All right.
Your presentation, we don't have any consent. Seven items.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Close discussion. All in favor, vote pass and aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Now we have seven public hearings. First is annexation 18-7, David Bamford. Open the public hearing. Okay, ready to go.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is one of four annexation petitions before you tonight. The first one is related to a project that was approved last November. Avenue is at White Oak, which is a town home development on East Corner Road. And this is to annex 26.82 acres of that project site. The case number was conditionally used permit SB 18-02. And this is a map of the annexation site outlined in black. The front portion of the project site is already inside the town limits. The back portion of the site is currently not. And this is a requirement, or this was a condition of approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Move we adopt ordinance number 20194019, and an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Garner for the avenues at White Oak.
Second. Close discussion, all in favor, vote pass and aye.
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 The next annexation case is for the property that the town purchased on East Corner Road. This site is 45.11 acres. Zoning is R40. And this is the back portion of the site that was purchased by the town on April the 16th of 2019. And this map shows the annexation boundary outlined in yellow. The front portion of the property is inside the town limits, the back portion is not. So this is a housekeeping annexation to annex the entire tract. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, open the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Call for motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 20194020, an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Garner.
Second. Close discussion, all in favor, vote pass and aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The third annexation is related to a site plan that was approved on July 1st for CCAC Building Solutions. The site is located at 2000 Waterfield Drive. The site's 5.78 acres in size. And this, again, was a requirement or a condition of approval of the site plan. And this map shows the boundary of the annexation site. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on this case.
Hearing now, I open the public hearing. Close the public hearing, call for motion.
Move adoption of ordinance number 20194021 to extend the corporate limits of the town of Garner.
Second. Motion made, second, all in favor, vote pass and aye.
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 The last case, annexation 19-07. The property is located at 900 Withers Road. And there is already an existing business located there. And they were having some problems with their septic system, so they have requested to connect the town water and sewer. And per the Raleigh Garner merger agreement, an annexation petition is required for the extension of service. And this is a map of the annexation boundary in red. And also included is the right-of-way along the frontage, along Withers Road to annex the road right-of-way. Total annexation area would be 3.49 acres. And again, the address is 900 Withers Road. And the business name is called The Produce Box. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Open the public hearing. Close the public hearing, call for motion.
Again, I will move that we adopt ordinance 20194022, an ordinance to extend the corporate limits of the town of Garner.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor, vote pass and aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Been action for 12 minutes.
Mayor and members of council, this is a general use rezoning request. This involves two pieces of property at the northeast corner of Auburn Nightdale Road and East Corner Road. 2201 East Corner Road and 4629 Auburn Nightdale Road. The total size of the rezoning site is .78 acres. The existing zoning is residential 20, which is single-family. And the requested zoning is neighborhood office. The schedule for this case would be that after tonight, it would go to the planning commission on November the 18th for their review and recommendation, and then back to council on December the 2nd. This is a descending map, and the rezoning site is located here on the northeast corner, Auburn Nightdale and East Corner Road. And this is a close-up aerial view of the rezoning site outlined in orange. Both tracks are vacant. There was an old commercial building that was located on the corner track that was torn down, probably within the last year or so. And the predominant use in this area is single-family. To the northeast, to the northwest, we have a large vacant tract that is zoned multi-residential 1. To the south, on the south side of East Corner Road, we have single-family homes. The zoning to the northeast and south and southwest is residential 20. To the northwest is multi-residential 1. This is an obsolete zoning district that allows single-family duplexes and triplexes. South of the railroad, we have some industrial, light industrial zoning, and also some heavy commercial service business zoning. North along Auburn Nightdale Road, we do have some, a patch of service business zoning, which I believe is an auto sales business. And east, on East Garner Road, this patch of service business is an auto repair business. This is a list of the zoning cases in this area of Garner. The oldest case we found was from 1993. The zoning case from 2017 was when the town expanded the ETJ on the east side of Auburn Nightdale Road. That area came in from Wake County. The most recent zoning case was Z19-03, which was a site about half a mile east on East Corner Road, east of the intersection of Auburn Nightdale Road. And that request was from R40 and R20 to RMH. The existing zoning classification is residential 20, which is single-family. Minimum lot size for development is 20,000 square feet minimum. The requested zoning is neighborhood office, and this is the lowest level non-residential district that allows single-family office, daycares, and banks as examples. This chart shows the dimensional requirements for both the existing and proposed zoning districts. Minimum lot area is different. The lot width, the minimum lot width is different. The front, rear, yard setbacks are about the same with the exception of the side yard and the corner side yard. This is a list of uses. The column on the left are the uses permissible in the current R20 zoning. The current zoning allows single-family detached. It also allows family care homes and group homes, community centers, in-home daycares, schools, cemeteries, parks, churches, minor utilities such as elevated storage tanks, golf courses, and bed and breakfast. The uses in the right column would be the uses that would be permissible on the site if this was approved. Uses in orange would be new uses that would be permissible on the site. The green uses would be uses that would be removed from being permissible. The primary uses for neighborhood office would be single-family, upper-story residential. That means you could have an apartment above a first-floor office. Module homes would also be permissible, adult daycares, child daycares, funeral homes, ambulances, cemeteries, parks, churches, minor utilities, golf courses, indoor gyms and spas, bed and breakfasts, hair and beauty salons, banks and financial institutions, and indoor veterinarian kennels. This chart shows which zoning districts temporary uses are permissible in. The applicant has expressed a desire to hold a temporary seasonal outdoor sales on the property. And the neighborhood office zoning district is the first and lowest level non-residential district that this use is permissible in. So seasonal sales, which would include pumpkins, Christmas trees, could include flowers for Valentine's Day, could also include firework stands. Those types of seasonal sales are not permissible in residential zoning. This is the Garner Ford Comprehensive Growth Plan. The property to the north, again, this rezoning site includes two separate tracts of properties. The property to the north is designated as low-density residential. And the plan for this area would be less than two and a half units an acre. The corner tract, which is about .35 acres in size, is designated as Neighborhood Commerce Center on the Garner Ford plan. And uses that would be compatible with that designation would include retail, sales, service, convenience stores, restaurants, or office uses. And the comprehensive plan also notes that neighborhood garden centers or agricultural sales stands that are small-scale and compatible with the surrounding land uses would fall within Neighborhood Commerce Center designation. The planning department will present the zoning consistency statement to the planning commission at their meeting on November the 18th. After conducting the public hearing, staff recommends that the council refer this zoning case to the planning commission for their review at their meeting on November the 18th. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions before the public hearing.
Have anything?
No.
Yeah, I'll open the public hearing. Be the time for anyone in support of this zoning request, or anyone who wants to have questions about it, or anyone who would speak against this zoning request, to come forward at this time.
Thank you for having us. We have a lot of folks here tonight from the Auburn-
Can you state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Crystal Bueller, and I live at 2213 East Garner Road in Raleigh. Which is of that site there, it's the property, not the very next property, but the next property to the right from the site. I graduated from Garner Senior High, class of 80. I'm born and raised in Auburn, and many of our neighbors and some family members are here. My parents own this property, Bob and Elizabeth Ashley. And my brother and my husband and one of my daughters are here too. They all attend Garner schools. I've always had a dream since I was a little girl. There was a General Store owned by Leland Poole on that corner when I was a little girl, and, you know, it was your typical General Store with candy and people sitting around a pot-bellied stove, and it was just a wonderful atmosphere. And Mr. Leland Poole's daughter-in-law is here now, Nancy Poole. They sold us this property. We love the historical aspect of Auburn. A lot of people don't realize it, but it's just a really quaint, old-fashioned neighborhood. We are all for progress, and we know that that's moving our way, and we embrace that. But when my parents bought that site, we thought, what can we do with this now to make it a really special place for the community during this period before everything, you know, really kind of, you know, grows very quickly? We know that's not too much longer before that. But for now, we thought a nice quaint neighborhood market, a community market, would be very nice. And we're not sure what might, should come after that, but at this point, that's kind of my dream, to have that. And so, if I may, pass out a few things to- About-
Sure. Thank you.
That's just a few bullet points about the things that we have in mind. We are not looking to make this a flea market. Probably won't sell fireworks there, but we definitely want a fresh produce, open-air fresh, fresh produce market, like a small farmer's market. Probably would allow in trees and plants and flowers and, you know, any great seasonal farm or nursery produce would be really great there, we think. Probably some food trucks would be nice to mix in during high-traffic hours. It's a really busy intersection. So we, that's our thought. And I have, I have a little map diagram to give you. Shows us a little better. So as you can see, we're already very hopeful. And we're also planning a courtyard, and we already have Duke Energy. In a couple of weeks, they'll be installing some area lights. And I have a picture here I'd like to show you, and I'll show everybody behind me also. My brother has already made me a sign to put a logo on. And I've already started developing a logo. I'm gonna pass this to y'all. I just thought I'd let everybody see it. We would like to keep that nice rural feel, but at the same time, we're embracing the progress that's coming through.
Oh, yes, thank you.
One of our neighbors that couldn't be here tonight is a graphic designer for the Raleigh Chamber of Commerce. And we let her have her wedding in our barn, and so our barter was is that she become my graphic designer. So she did a really good job. Her name is Casey Solis. And so here are just some other logo ideas. I just wanted to just show you these, just so that you would see how seriously we were developing this and wanting it to. We understand that it's temporary and seasonal. And so we have a lot of really great ideas floating around our heads and the neighborhood. And I'm- So it'll look something like that, the logo will. Do you have any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Have you had the opportunity to have any discussion with the planning staff about parking?
No. I did meet with Mr. Hodges and Mr. Bamford, and we sat and talked quite a bit, but we did not discuss parking. Now, I already have parking bumpers down there. We measured 30 feet from the center line and went ahead and put parking bumpers. In fact, they are the original parking bumpers that were there when the old General Store was there. And Nancy Poole thankfully kept those, and we pulled them out, and she allowed them, us to have those. So we have those out there now, and you'll see those on the diagram, the green diagram. As far as parking, there is room for more. We just went ahead and put those out right away because, well, we needed to get them somewhere. And we went ahead and put those there. I, I think we can add to those. We will plan to add to those. But it's a small farmer's market, so I think that we'll be able to have sufficient parking. But, no, sir. I do not know the details of the rules on that yet.
Well, we're probably, both of us are a little head of the game, but once those go through rezoning, then you, you- There'll be some guidelines to follow.
Right.
Because that's, well, enough said.
Yes, sir. And I understand I'll also need sign permits, you know, and other things such as that.
Is the, is the parking area already gravelled or just designated as a, or maybe paved over?
I don't know. No, no. There is a large gravel area right in the corner. If you look on that green diagram, you'll see, right there at the corner, there's a large gravel area. For years, people have been pulling in there and stopping. But the parking, these are our parking bumpers. We have actually more than this, more than you see. But these, we just, you know, we measured out the distance people would have to pull out. This is actually on grass for now, but we're pla, and it's just flat. It's just a real flat piece of property. It's not low, it's just flat. But we will probably need to put some gravel in there to stabilize those areas. But it's just beautiful green grass right now.
I should know that. I usually drive out to these sites, and I was caught by the, I started on this side of the detour out there, so I didn't have time to get around, but at any rate-
Okay.
I've been by there a few times, but I was going out there just to look specifically this time, but I missed doing that, and I would have known more about the parking area. Thank you.
Something else that we thought would be nice and special about Auburn Market is there's a lot of history there people don't know about. We had a depot, we had a post office at one time, and it's on the map as Auburn, North Carolina still. And so we, you know, it's the Auburn community to us now. But there's a lot of history there, and the Poole family has, has kept a lot of that history. And part of what we'd like to do is, in our courtyard area, maybe have some information about the history of Auburn. We thought that would make it a little historical and special.
Maybe if you corresponded with our friends down in Alabama, they would talk about another Auburn down in their state that they get pretty passionate about.
Yes, yes, I understand that. In fact, I did check the internet to see if there were any other Auburn markets around. And of course, there is some down south. And, and there is one up north called Auburn Market. That's why ours will be called Auburn NC Market.
Very good.
Mm-hmm. Any more questions?
I don't have any.
Okay.
I think it's just fair to say that, uh, don't be surprised at the process you'll go through, so just, got acquainted with the planning department.
Okay. I'm sure I have a lot to learn.
Council, any more questions? Anybody else that wants to speak on this? Anybody else going to speak on this, wants to speak on it? Yeah, I'm a close poll here. Ready for a motion? Mayor, I recommend, as suggested, that we refer this to the Planning Commission for their further consideration.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor of vote, I say aye.
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 Mr. Mayor, the next matter is a combination of a conditional use zoning and a CUP matter. And so, with the mayor's indulgence, as town attorney, I'll take a few minutes to explain to the public and the participants how this is going to be a little bit more complicated than the typical matter before the town. The reason it's complicated is it's a combination of two different hearings. One is a zoning hearing, and one is a permit hearing based on a site plan. And so, basically, what we try to do is conduct two different types of hearings, basically back-to-back, all in one hearing format, and it can be a little confusing at times to people. But basically, what we're going to do is start out with, well, first, it's the CUDZ 1902 and CUPSP 1905, Centro Cristiano Church. We're going to start out with a staff presentation of the staff report, and then if somebody on behalf of the applicant wishes to speak on the zoning, that'll be fine. And then, if there are any persons who wish to, members of the public who wish to speak in favor of or against the zoning, then it'll be time for you to come forward and give your statements. We'll then go into the permit phase, and that's basically related to the details of the site plan, and that's based on technical information and expert testimony by the planners, the engineer, people with that kind of training experience. We'll see who shows up. I see Mr. Leonard on here as an engineer, and sometimes as landscape architect or whatever. In any event, that phase of the hearing is what's called a quasi-judicial proceeding, in which quasi-judicial means sort of like a court. It's a little bit more formal than the zoning part of the hearing. And that, therefore, what we'll do is require that the people who testify in that permit portion of this hearing will be persons who have some expertise, and they'll testify based on testimony. So, I'll ask anybody who wishes to testify in connection with the permit, please come forward at this time and let the clerk and... The relevant law requires that the town council be asked whether they are, have any preconceived notions or bias that would prevent them from giving a fair and honest decision based on the evidence in this case. And if you do, let me know. Not typically that one has, and so, in the absence of any affirmative comment, we'll deem that to mean they have none. Next question is whether any town council member has received a communication from anyone on behalf of the applicant or a member of the public that would be considered an ex parte communication, that is, a discussion about this case before now and outside of the confines of this hearing room. So, I'll ask if you have received any such communications. And since they have not, and since we have got the witnesses sworn, we're ready to proceed. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bamford from the staff will make his first presentation, then we'll proceed with discussion of the zoning part, and then we'll go into Phase Two, which is the permit. If you'd like to open the hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Open poll here.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a conditional use rezoning and a conditional use site plan application. The applicant is Centro Cristiano Jesus Ray. Location involves three pieces of property on St. Mary Street 600, 602, 604. The total tract size is 1.15 acres. The Planning Commission did review this request at their meeting on October the 21st and did recommend approval. This is a Google street view of the rezoning and project site. This is the redouts child daycare use that was in operation for many years. The building is not being used at this time. The proposed use is a church. This is an aerial view of the project and rezoning site outlined in orange. It involves three separate pieces of property. There was a residential structure on the middle lot that has been torn down. Parking is proposed for that center piece. And this will be discussed in the site plan presentation, but the lots, all three lots will be recombined into one tract. But right now, it's currently three separate tracts. The zoning in this area is residential 12. And this is along both sides of St. Mary Street and Sunset Drive and Hilltop Avenue. First Baptist Church of Garner is zone R12. Churches are a permissible use in the R12 zoning district. The proposed use, the proposed use is permissible in the existing zoning. However, there is a conflict with some standards, and we'll get into that in just a second. The Chamber of Commerce and there's an office, that's a zone office institutional to the northwest, and on the east side of Benson Road, we have community retail zoning. This list shows the zoning cases in this area of Garner. The oldest case was from 1970. The most recent case was from 2004. The rezoning site, it looks like we had a case from 1980 where there was a request to rezone from R12 to office and institutional, and that was denied. The existing zoning classification is residential 12, which is medium density residential. Density is around 3.6 units an acre. Minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet. Permissible uses include churches, schools, group homes, cemeteries, police and fire stations, and community centers. The requested zoning classification is neighborhood office, conditional use district 215. And the neighborhood office district is a transitional zoning district that is usually found between single-family and commercial uses. The neighborhood office zoning does allow single-family, office, churches, daycares, and barber and beauty salons. And we're going to explain the reason for the zoning request. The site was previously used as a child daycare operation. The site is currently not being used at this time. Churches are permissible in the existing R12 zoning district. However, Article 5.3b6 has certain standards that churches have to meet if they are developed in residential districts. And this includes a 40-foot setback from all exterior lot lines. And since this building is already existing, there were conflicts and problems meeting that requirement, so staff recommended rezoning to neighborhood office as a solution to get around the conflict with that 40-foot setback requirement. There are use restrictions proposed as part of this request, and this list shows the permissible uses. All other neighborhood office uses would not be permissible. Permissible uses will include single-family detached, daycare centers, churches, and general office. Other uses, such as funeral homes, banks, or financial institutions, and barber beauty salons, would not be a permissible use on this site. The Garner Ford Plan shows everything west of St. Mary Street as medium density residential. Under the plan, this designation would support a density of 2.5 to 5 units per acre for residential uses, including single-family duplex, triplex, quadplexes, and townhome-style developments. In addition to the future land use map, the Garner Ford Plan also has some guiding principles. On page 56 through 60, there's a section on keeping our character. And this guiding, the guiding principles and recommendations for keeping our character are found on page 56 through 60, and staff finds that this request is in support of the following. Encourage redevelopment and reuse of existing sites and buildings that are complementary to the surrounding area. Page 56 of the comp plan. So, while the request isn't in line with the future land use map, it is in support of this particular section of the Garner Ford Plan, keeping our character. Staff offers that although the request is not consistent with the land use map, it is consistent with the guiding principles and recommendations for building on and conserving existing character. Approval of this zoning request would automatically include an amendment to the future land use map to redesignate the site from medium density residential to civic and institutional. And this is the land use category that includes offices, schools, churches, civic clubs, post offices, and faith-based uses. This concludes the rezoning portion of the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Allison will pick up and give the report on the specifics of the site plan.
David, as it relates to the three lots, I believe you said that the proposal is that the middle lot that would be used essentially for parking?
That is correct, and we have a map of that in the next portion of the presentation. So, the existing non-residential building on the north part of the site would be used as the main church facility. In the middle, you would have parking, and then the existing structure to the south would be maintained on the site, I believe, as a church office.
Okay, and so, it's just a follow-up to that. There's a church right up the street that utilizes on-street parking, and I assume this, if this is approved, it would be sort of a first-come, first-served parking on the street if people who attend this church desire to do so. And so, I guess I was wondering if the proposal would be, if they're anticipating there would be adequate space in the parking. Otherwise, the on-street parking may be a little bit of a competitive nature. I guess first persons who get there. I think on-street parking is allowed. There are no designated spots, certainly people park there. I think there's a question in there somewhere.
Yes, so, I don't, I did not review the specifics during the rezoning report. That'll be discussed in the site plan portion.
Okay.
There will be onsite parking in St. Mary Street. On-parking is permissible.
Okay.
I have a question, David. If memory serves me correctly, when the daycare closed, it had something to do with problems with the building itself. Has that been mitigated?
I don't have any information on that, but they would have to meet all the building code requirements for an assembly, so the inspections department will, they would probably have to get some type of interior fit-up permit as a next step after rezoning and site plan approval.
So, there was a building, I think, in the middle lot that was demolished, as I understand it, and I believe there were some indications that maybe, I don't know if it was lead paint or something. I'm wondering if that's the building that may have been demolished.
So, there were actually two that were removed. There was, I guess, a residential structure in the front, and in the back, there was another detached building that was also removed.
Okay.
I don't have any history on what was used in that back building. It could have been storage, or it could have been a classroom, I'm not sure, but that is removed.
What was the vote for the, for the planning commission on rezoning? What was the, what was the vote from the, on the, from the planning commission?
It was unanimous in approval. Yes, sir.
The building to the south, what it's, what is its intended use?
The building on the south side, it's my understanding this would be a church office.
Is there, was there any... Could they have accomplished the same overall objective by way of a variance or figuring to the Board of Adjustment to get, handle the setback?
I believe we did look at that, and I don't, I think we came to the conclusion that that was not an option. I can't remember the specifics. That's something we did discuss.
That's all I've got now.
This time, does anyone from the applicant, we should speak on the zoning part of the case, or any members of the public as well?
My name is Brian Leonard with BRL Engineering and Surveying at 112 East Johnson Street in Smithfield. And I believe the staff has done a good job of providing the detailed history and background on this. I'll be happy to answer any questions or elaborate, if I may.
Okay, we're going to move on to the...
Any members of the public wish to be heard on the zoning? Allison, we'll proceed to the site plan.
Good evening. I'll be on the site plan portion for this project. As David stated, there's 1.5, excuse me, 1.15 acres. And this is an overall site plan, site layout for the project. As you can see, that the existing building would be on your right-hand side, in the middle would be the parking spaces, and on the left-hand side, the existing home would be for a church office. be for a church office. There's no open space requirement for this commercial development. Landscaping buffers, there's tree, ten percent tree preservation requirements are being met with the combination of existing and replacement plantings. The perimeter buffer is thirty-five foot in width, and the buffer on planting requirements are being met with new plant material. There's street buffers along St. Mary's and Sunset Drive, and both of those are being met by, excuse me, new plant material. And the street trees are provided one every forty feet along St. Mary's and Sunset Drive as well. Lighting is shown to be in conformance with the UDO. Then fire and along with inspections Department have reviewed the preliminary plans and approved them. And parking, to answer your question, Mr. Marshburn, their parking is based on one parking space over four seats that the, that the church can hold. There's twenty-five required, and they're, excuse me, the twenty-five required, and they're proposing twenty-five, two of those which are going to be ADA parking spaces. There are no FEMA flood, floodplain, or any environmentally sensitive areas on this property. And for the church, it says Centro Cristiano Church is a redevelopment project. This project proposed an amount of impervious surface under the lab of twelve percent impervious surface threshold. Therefore, they do not need to implement a water quality and stormwater control measure. The project as, excuse me, the project runoff calculations for the one, ten, and twenty-five year storm show no downstream impacts from the increased impervious surface. So no nitrogen offset payment will be, will be required for this project. Existing water and sewer connections are available along St. Mary's and Sunset Drive. The roads and infrastructure and sidewalks, the site has approximately two hundred and forty-seven feet of road frontage on St. Mary's Street and approximately two hundred feet of frontage along Sunset Drive. Sunset Drive, the town maintains twenty-four-foot paved facility within a thirty-foot right-of-way. And St. Mary's Street is a thirty, excuse me, a town maintained thirty-foot paved facility within a thirty-eight-foot right-of-way. St. Mary's Street currently has curb and gutter. Sidewalks will be added to St. Mary's as a part of this project. There are no recommendations for St. Mary's Street beyond what the UDO will require for town streets. Therefore, this project with additions to sidewalks along St. Mary's may be found in conformity with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. There are no recommendations from the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Plan, so this project can be found consistent with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan. As a specialty review and, excuse me, plan revisions, staff finds this project as now proposed conforms to the regulations of the UDO so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. The three lots that we talked about earlier will be combined to one lot prior to the issuance of building permit, and also the town will also have to receive inspection fees to be paid prior to the issuance of the building permit. The planning commission reviewed this request on the October twenty, excuse me, twenty-first planning commission meeting. With a unanimous vote, the planning commission confirms staff's findings in Section Seven that CUP SP 1905 Centro Cristiano Church is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies, and further accepted staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan being detailed in Section Five of this report as their own, and recommend approval of the CUDZ 1902 to the Town Council. Any questions for me? Yes.
The plans didn't have any details on landscaping and the distance, particularly on Sunset. It's about three feet of land between the curb line and the property line would, would, if it's got to plant trees every forty feet, will the trees be planted on private property? Will they be planted in the right-of-way?
Those trees should be planted with on the private property, not in the right-of-way because we don't want the trees, the roots and stuff to get into the utilities.
Or curb.
Or curb.
I have a question. I think it's implied, but the structure that will be, that will remain, I assume it will remain intact, there will be no demolition or add-on, and renovation would be done inside, I assume, but.
You're talking about the, the church or the office?
I'm talking about the church, yeah, church building.
That I'm not sure of. I'll let the applicant ask that question, but to my knowledge, I believe it's just going to, an interior fit-up.
Yeah. Or I guess the question is, yeah, the belief is that the current structure is sufficient size to, to remain intact and as, I'm assuming there will have to be renovation done to the inside.
I believe it's inside.
I'll ask the applicant that question.
Anything from the applicant?
Do I need to restate my name for the record? I will if I need to. This is a lot easier to discuss with a site plan, obviously. As far as the building, just to expand on that last comment, their plan is to just use the footprint as it exists today with interior outfits. And also, to expand on some of the comments about the parking, you can see that we've provided twenty-five spaces onsite, and at four seats, or four, one parking space for every four seats, you basically max this building out at a hundred seats in the assembly. So that gives you an idea of what they might be doing inside in their capacity.
Is it fair to assume, and I don't want to beat this dead horse, but that in addition to the parking there, I mean, obviously, some, some parishioners may park along the street if it's available. I know that, I know another church on that street, they certainly park on the street there.
Right, right. I think I heard the staff say that public parking is available on St. Mary's.
There's nothing prohibiting on-street parking.
So, you know, I'm sure that if it's available, of course, a, a church service is kind of an intermittent use as well. It's not a, not a daily, daily use.
We don't normally see all this crosshatching on the, around the periphery, and I couldn't find a legend on it real quick, but what is this, what's, what's the meaning of the, of the crosshatching of, that pretty well covers the, the west side and the south side of the lot?
Those on the site plan were put on there as the required landscape areas. It includes both the buffer areas and the street tree planting areas, those type things. And you'll see crosshatched area around the parking lot as well. So those would be the areas that the landscaping is required within. And of course, we've prepared a full set of plans, detailed drawings, and those landscape, the landscape plan is all within the full set of drawing.
Normally, I don't, I don't get too, I pay attention to where trees are with respect to the curb. Subdivision I live in, there's maybe over thirteen homes on a, on a block, and I kept account of them, just walking around the sidewalk, and we'd been in it twelve years, and there was twelve or fifteen curb sections that had to be replaced because we had oak trees that were planted too close to the curb, and it was just popping them sidewalk, curb. It was ridiculous. But it looks like then you got, you got to, Allison, probably there's a question more for you, is so there are required plantings beyond the buffer, you know, on the interior of the site?
This is your, I'm not sure if you can see my arrow, up top, the north side, these are the perimeter buffer right here, and perimeter buffer over here, too. And along, right here is your street buffer, and along this side would be your street buffer, too, as well.
And inside that dash line that designates the exterior or the outside buffer, are there some, some shading done on the inside of it, does that mean there's more landscaping has to be done there as well?
The landscaping would be done in that shaded area right here.
Typical?
Um, yes, it's typical, because we have to count for, like you said, the utilities that are there, and it has to be so far off the back of curb, so there's, the plantings can survive.
I was just, I don't, I don't know if I can elaborate. What is that street buffer width along Sunset?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Can you tell by the plan? It's, it's just a width measured from the right-of-way.
I don't recall. I can look at the plan.
So it's not next to the curb? It's, it's, it begins at the right-of-way?
I got that one cleared. Can you?
The minimum fit, minimum is fifteen feet wide.
I'm, I'm done with the exterior. I'm looking at it. After we get past the, the thirty-five or the twenty-five or the fifteen-foot buffer, we can get back to the site plan. Last one in line. There you go. Now we'll try it.
Need a pour.
All the way up top?
Is there a pour?
We got a pour, is this the pour right here? Is this it?
It's likely not going to work on there. Borrow your mouse for a minute. Got a cordless mouse?
Uh-uh.
No?
Yeah, we got a, maybe a fifteen-foot buffer, there you go, hole right there. We're requiring plantings in that area.
That's the yard. Where plantings can be planted, but it's not required to be planted there.
It's trying, it looked like that we were going to cover up the place in trees and bushes, and it looked like we had, we were going beyond what we normally do, and I'm, I'm not protecting the town of this, and I'm protecting him, or the applicant. So that, you, you cleared it up. They can, they can plant there, but it's, you're not forcing them.
No, just on the outside.
Now we're cooking on gas.
Okay, well, now here, here's, anyone in the audience?
Please refer to the motions in your worksheet, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would just, I'm not ready to make a motion, just a quick comment, as I travel, as many of you do, different places, I see certain areas of certain towns where there are churches in close proximity to each other, so this will, this will fit that circumstance. There's a First Baptist Church just up the street, so folks can travel on that street and, I guess, make their choice there of which place they may want to stop and worship, which, which I think is, is a good thing. That's all.
Anything else? Anybody?
Are we ready for a motion on the rezoning first, Mr. Attorney?
It was a hearing and have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that fine consistent, fine CUDZ 1902, consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval.
Motion second, further discussion. All in favor, vote pass and aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to say, move that I, I move the town accepts the staff's statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan detailed in Section Five of the staff report as our own, and in doing so, also amend the future plan use map for median distant, medium-density residence to civic and institutional, and I therefore move that the Town Council adopt ordinance number 2019-4023, approving rezoning request CUDZ 19-02, as it is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely be compatible with the surrounding zoning, provide adequate buffering to adjoining residential uses per the conditions, encourage redevelopment and reuse of existing sites and buildings that are complementary to the surrounding area.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, vote pass and aye. Okay, next is S U P S P 1915, R S mechanical. Mr. Mayor, this is also a quasi-judicial proceeding as a special use, but an associated zoning case. This one is, let's see, number, S U P S P 1916, R N S mechanical, and in this matter, we will have simply the quasi-judicial part of the case and not the legislative zoning case. So I will ask, ask members of the council if anyone has any bias, prejudice, or preconceived notions that would prevent, prevent them from making a fair decision in this case. If so, signify by saying yes. In the absence of any response, I'll then ask council if there any, one has any ex parte communications to disclose. Mr. Vance?
Was that just the rezoning I did? Do we have to approve the site plan as well? The, the plan that was put before us?
I believe we did both, even though I thought we did them in reverse order, but.
I think probably, yeah, I think probably we got, we got going too fast on this one. Please do the, do the site plan.
Sorry?
Yes, sir, you need to proceed with it.
Got you, okay. I recommend a fine CUP 1905, consistent with the town plans and ordinance, and, and recommend approval.
Like specific conditions to be listed on the permit, correct?
Correct.
Just second.
Motion made second, all in favor, vote pass and aye. Aye. Now. S U P eighteen, I mean nineteen. All right, now we get back on to this one. This is the quasi-judicial proceeding in connection with the S U P, and we already asked the questions, I'll ask them again. Does anyone have any ex parte communications to disclose? Does anyone have any reason, believe they cannot give a fair and honest impartial decision in this case? In, in the absence of responses to those, we'll ask if anyone plans to testify in this case, other than Ms. Long, is anyone from the applicant here? Anyone who wishes to testify in this as a expert, please come forward and be sworn to the clerk. If you have.
She has been sworn in.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're ready to open the hearing and let her roll.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you have conditional use permit, CUP S P 1916, R S mechanical. The applicant is Spalding and Norris. The owners are R S Garner Holdings LLC. It is located at Zero Garner Station Boulevard, and the tract size is approximately 1.72 acres. This project went to the Planning Commission on October 21st. They did recommend it forward to Town Council, and we are hearing this tonight on November The predominant uses in this area are industrial flex and office. There is an apartment complex, which is Lennox Place, to the south of the subject property. Lennox Place Circle is a private drive, therefore perimeter buffer was required on the subject property. The immediate area is all service business zoning, except for Lennox Place Apartments, which is zone multifamily. which is zone multifamily, too. A neighborhood meeting took place on June 11th, 2019, at 6:30 PM. One person attended this meeting, and the questions involved elevations, landscaping, and future public meetings that would take place. As I said before, the acreage is approximately 1.72 acres. The proposed use is light and industrial flex space. The lot size is, the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet due to it being zone service business. The setbacks are 35 from the front, from the rear, 0 to 25, from the side, 0 to 25, and the corner side is 35. As you can see here, the perimeter buffers are in dark green. The street buffers, which are to the north, and the west are the street buffers, and the stormwater device is located to the south of the site. Building elevations will be constructed of split level elevation of brick veneer, precast stone, and corrugated metal, and there are six roll-up doors on the southern elevation. No open space is required for this, and site is commercial. Pre-cobage requirements will be met with 4.2 preserved and 7.2 replacement for a total of 11.4 vegetation preserved on the site. For the perimeter buffers, a 31.5-foot perimeter buffer is provided to the east and south of the site, and the eastern and southern buffers have been reduced to 31.5 under the condition that the site to the south, that's Lennox Place, maintain the evergreen buffer currently in place between the proposed site and Lennox Place Apartments. This reduction meets the intent of Section 7.1 K 7 Alpha of the ordinance. There is a 15-foot buffer, horizontal distance separation only adjacent to Garner Station Boulevard, as well as along the shared access drive from Garner Station Boulevard. Trees are provided every 40 feet. Proposed lighting does meet the requirements of the U D O, and all fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin, which is recommended by staff. The inspections department with the fire department has reviewed and preliminary approved this plan. And parking is based on the square footage of light industrial flex space, which is one space per 500 square feet. The required number, amount of spaces is 27, and they have proposed 34. There is no FEMA designated floodplain on the site, and no proposed development in any environmentally sensitive areas. And R S mechanical is not located within the watershed protection area. The site is subject to water quality requirements for nitrogen and water quantity for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. This development plan proposes a stormwater control measure and underground detention system. These devices will provide treatment for nitrogen and any water quantity requirements at the site. The site will be served by City of Raleigh Water and Sewer Infrastructure. Connection to water will occur through taps off the existing water line in Garner Station Boulevard, and connection to the sanitary sewer system will occur through an extension of the existing sewer line at the rear of the adjacent parcel to the west. And you can see the connection there to the southwest. There are no additional frontage improvements required along Garner Station Boulevard, as the sidewalks have already been built out. A review of the Garner Forward Transportation Plan revealed the recommendation for sidewalks along the front of Garner Station Boulevard. Since the recommended sidewalk already exists, this project as proposed may be considered consistent with the Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the parks and recreation, open space, and Greenway's master plan revealed no additional plan recommendations in the project area. Therefore, it can be considered consistent. There are three site-specific conditions for this plan. Prior to the receipt of approved plans, engineering department inspection fees must be paid to the town of Garner. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, all applicable water and sewer fees must be paid to the City of Raleigh Public Utilities Department. And prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the stormwater program administrator shall be in receipt of proof of payment for the required nitrogen offset payment to an approved mitigation bank. Also, rec, a recordation with Wake County Register of Deeds and Operations and Maintenance, as well as a memorandum of agreement for the stormwater control measure, and stormwater control measure certification and as-built drawings. On the staff report that all of you will have, there will also be an additional condition for requirement of an access recording for the parking. That condition has been removed because the applicant has provided the necessary paperwork to show that it is not necessary. Planning Commission reviewed this request at their October 21st, 2019 meeting. By unanimous vote, the Planning Commission confirmed staff's findings in Section 5 that CUP S P 1916, R S mechanical, is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. And if you can please refer to motion section. If there are any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer them. Yes, Mr. Strange?
Get back to the aerial photograph that shows the adjacent building.
The site plan section?
Yeah.
The site plan?
Uh, that one right there.
This one, okay.
Can we tell from this that setback and the, or both of these buildings will be about the same?
The setback for the industrial building that's to the west of the site? I don't know off the top of my head what the setback is for that building. I can say that I think this site is going to be further, the building will be further back.
And that, that erases my concern. If it was going to be further up, then it might obscure the other building, and just about the relative positioning of them. I don't know what kind of jurisdiction we have on that, but I wouldn't want one to obscure the other. But if, if the site in question, the recommend site under consideration is going to be further back, then that's fine.
I can go back to the site plan if you'd like to see.
And.
If that proposes any concerns for you?
Too much there. Just a little corner. Okay. Looks like it's a little bit further forward, then.
Maybe in relation to the driveway, you can see where the front is of this one compared to the other.
There's a. That looks like a corner there.
Right.
Versus that one. It doesn't seem all that far out of line. The other thing, are the two, do the two buildings look, do, will they have similar materials? I'm trying to remember that building. I think Police Station used to be in there a long time ago. You weren't here then, obviously. But Joe, are those the same? Does it look, is that, the building where the police were, that had a brick front to it? Well, there.
So yes, they would be consistent?
Yeah.
They would be consistent. They both have brick.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
There won't be any internal partitions to begin with. They'll be just, it'll be outfitted, dependent upon the tenant.
When you say outfitted, this is an entirely new building that's going to be built?
Is it a one-tenant building? Or would it be multiple?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. No, it's just the one-tenant. It's R S mechanical.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody from the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pam Porter with T M T L A Associates, 5011 South Park Drive in Durham. We did the landscape plan for this, and I was the only one available to come to the meeting, but I'm familiar with this project, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. The, the owners could not be here tonight, but they, they're excited to stay in Garner. They currently lease some space somewhere else. They've outgrown it. So not only are they going to move into a bigger space and stay in Garner, they're also going to own their own building for the first time, so they're very excited about that. And they're, they're sad they couldn't be here tonight to, to talk a little bit more about their business, but they're excited to stay in Garner, and like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, this is going, this is R S mechanical, is that right?
Hmm?
This is R S mechanical, am I at the right spot?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Close to public hearing.
Thank you.
Call for motion.
Mayor, I move that we find consistent CUP S P 1916 with town plans and ordinances, and I move the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consisting in Section 5 of this report as our own, and finally, application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.1, 4.0 D, and therefore approve CUP S P 16, excuse me, CUP S P-19-16, R N S mechanical with the town standard conditions and the number of site-specific conditions, which is changed to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor, vote pass and aye.
Aye.
Very good. Jones Sausage widening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Johnson with Town Engineering, bringing this item to you for the Jones Sausage Road widening. This is also N C D O T's T I P project number U 6099. Brief agenda tonight, we'll talk to you about a brief overview of the project, talk about the bid opening, the funding for this project, staff's recommendation, and the project schedule. So just a brief summary, I'm sure you're all very familiar with this site. Jones Sausage Road, this is in conjunction with the Amazon facility just south of the I-40 interchange. This project will include approximately 4,150 feet of road widening along Jones Sausage Road on both the west and east sides of their frontage. It will become a four-lane divided facility with a raised grass median. Will include curb and five-foot sidewalks about, along both the west and east sides of the project. So the widening also includes six entrances along the Amazon frontage, three of those being full-access intersections, and three right-in, right-out driveway. Two new traffic signals will be proposed in conjunction with this project, one at the site access number two, which is also at Calabar Street intersection there today, and then is another signal at site access number four to the south. So this is just another site plan overview that kind of shows, north is to your right, so showing the Amazon, just the road frontage and widening in relationship to the building that's there today. Bid opening was held on October 3rd. We get three bids total. This was handled by the developer. We'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. The engineer's estimate was approximately $3.8 million. Low bidder was S T Wooton with a bid of $3,600,214 for the base bid. And just talking a little bit about the base bid. The base bid was for the portion of the frontage widening along the Amazon property. There was also an alternate bid in that for the Garner Station Road intersection improvements, which is not going to be a part of the recommendation tonight, but we'll talk about that a little bit more. But just so you know the difference between the base bid and the alternate bid. The M W B subcontractor participation was 10.7%, and the right-of-way certification for Old Garner Road is not yet in hand, which is the reason why it's not being approved tonight, but it will be done, those improvements will be done and awarded separately or as a change order to this project at a later day. Sorry. So this project is based on a joint public-private venture agreement. As you know, the N C D O T and the town of Garner have a municipal agreement dated back in April of 2019, where the state appropriated approximately $4.5 million towards the road construction costs. The town has a maximum contribution of $600,000 that can go towards any cost in excess of the $4.5 million for roadway construction, which with the base bid that's coming in, it's going to be less than that, so, but there's also some other expenses that could come into play with, such as utility relocation costs that are not eligible for reimbursement under the state's municipal agreement, but those are not part of the, the recommendation tonight. The town also has a separate developer agreement with Hillwood Construction Services for March of this year, and where the, this agreement passed along a lot of the same requirements that were part of the town's municipal agreement with D O T, passed along a lot of those response, same responsibilities to the developer, including the professional design services, which were performed by Withers and Rabanel on behalf of Hillwood, land acquisition, right-of-way dedication along the Amazon frontage, as well as some land acquisition on the opposite side of the frontage, and they will also be handling construction administration. Construction costs will be reimbursed by N C D O T throughout construction, typically they handle it on a monthly invoicing, once the developer engineer submits their paperwork to justify the construction costs each month. Our recommendation tonight is to authorize the base bid award for Jones Sausage Road to S T Wooton Corporation, pending N C D O T's concurrence of the bid award, since this is on their STIP. The construction would be to begin construction as soon as they can get the contracts executed, and they have, expect to have construction completed by summer of 2020. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Chris, the, you talked about the intersection of Garner Road and Jones Sausage. Still waiting for some right-of-way certification, so that will come to us for in a separate bid, and that'll be a separate approval, correct?
Yeah, they actually, there was a bid for that alternate in, as part of what went out for advertisement, so it was bid as a part of this project, but due to the right-of-way certification not being ready, since the land acquisition has not completed at that intersection with those parcels, N C D O T is unable to provide right-of-way certification, which is a requirement to authorize construction. So we have that bid in hand, so we'll talk with D O T, and if we can utilize that bid, then it would come back later as a change order to that contract, and if, for whatever reason, that does not work out for, then they could rebid that separately.
That's the alternate bid, so separate from this $3.16 million bid, correct?
It is. I believe it was $200,000, $300,000 extra is what came in.
Do you anticipate Wooton having any problem holding firm on that alternate bid?
I can't answer that at this time.
What's the actual completion time in the contract?
They basically had this set up as a performance contract to meet a target date, so that is the, that is the premise that the developer is moving under, and they had hoped to have this completed by May of next year. Obviously, that's why they're wanting to get started as soon as possible, so that is a very aggressive schedule, and of course, that's tied to them trying to get to the facility open, so I think it's in the developer mind to get this built as soon as they can.
I noticed also that the difference between the first and second bidder was roughly $800,000?
That's correct.
That's more than 20% differential.
Yeah, S T Wooton is doing quite a lot of work in this general area, which we believe has lent themselves a better, more competitive advantage. They're doing a lot of work in the I-40 corridor right next door, so.
That's the materials close by, don't they?
They do. They do.
I was just going to say, if you care to speculate.
That is my speculation, but I mean, it's.
Well, when I say a differential of 20%, that bothers me, but I'm glad that S T Wooton's got an excellent reputation, and obviously they, they got a quarter-billion dollar, or a third of a billion-dollar project going on out there now, so this is, this is an add-on. This, this is a change order to them.
Chris, during this, during this project, how much obstruction of the current roadway there will, I mean, will, the two lanes that are there be in full use, or?
I believe that they are planned to be in full use. Obviously, there'll be periodic delays, they'll have to do periodic lane closures. Don't believe they're planning any detours that I can recollect, but the, usually when you're doing these kind of jobs, they'll, they'll start out by widening the outside, so putting in the new curved sidewalk in the outer areas while traffic is, remains on the existing two-lane street, and then they'll move traffic to the outside to start working on the median and the interior lanes before they finalize it, the last phase to do the final markings.
As we know.
But it will be staged construction.
That's a heavily traveled area.
Absolutely. It is heavily traveled, and there will be delays, I'm sure. People will have to be patient during construction like this, I mean.
But they're on 40, it won't be.
These type of projects are never easy, but I think that kind of goes without saying that the long-term benefit is there if they can be patient for the first, for the, for the six to 12 months of construction.
I was going to say, but if I heard you correctly, potentially a completion within six months, or? six months, or...
That's what they're stating.
Confirmed to the...
But as I said, that is aggressive, so we'll see how that goes.
Confirmed to the listening public, the facility cannot open until this part of the roadway improvements are tied to the permit, have to be complete before they can open. That means they can't have employees in there working, but they will not be open as they're full, as wide open as their fulfillment zone.
That is my understanding.
Withers and Ravenel was the consultant doing the plans?
Yes, sir.
And, and this is a town project, we are administering the project, and is Withers continuing on as the, for construction admin and inspection?
I believe they have submitted, typically the way these state-funded projects, they kind of work very similar to how federal projects run, and construction administration is usually handled through a RFQ, just like professional design services. I believe Withers and Ravenel got an exemption request so that they can also submit for that same RFQ, but I don't know the status of that at this time, but my, their intent was to try to get that work as well, but you have to go through a process.
Will they provide inspection services, or will we...
Usually, the same firm that's doing the construction administration would provide the testing services as well. That's part of the same contract.
A testing or inspection?
Test, materials testing, and then construction administration. We will have an inspector on site representing the town. Since it's a DOT facility, obviously, they will assist during walkthroughs at the end. The contractor is also required to provide material testings to back up documentations for both asphalt and concrete on the job, so there will be several players that will be involved during construction, but construction admin, that would be the design professional. The town is not administering the construction, that is one of the requirements that was in the developer agreement that's being passed along to the developer.
You anticipate us having to have somebody out there full-time?
I wouldn't expect us to be out there full-time, no.
If we have some free time here in the near future, you can volunteer out there.
Mr. Johnson...
I need to go get a hearing aid.
Will there be sidewalks on both sides?
Yes, sir. Throughout the, throughout the limits of that, of approximately 4,000 feet of frontage, yes, sir. And then I think there's about maybe 500 to 800 feet of transitional widening at both the north and south ends where there's no curb or sidewalk.
Yeah, are there any power poles to be moved?
I haven't looked at the utility relocation plans, but I'd be surprised if there's not being some power relocated.
Isn't there a requirement, isn't there a requirement before right-of-way is initiated that utilities are moved?
Not necessarily moved, but that all easements have been put into place that allow that to take place. Some utilities do get a head start, a lot of other utilities kind of need to go hand-in-hand with the construction process due to topography changes, it's sort of premature in some areas. Power is usually the one you see get out further ahead.
As you know, that's been accounted for in the, in the project cost already, or is that to be determined?
Not, not included in the cost that we're talking about tonight, because this is solely roadway construction, utility relocation costs are, they're billed by the utility companies. So, that would, that would be something that may be extra, and that was what the town's $600,000 maximum contribution, some of those costs could go towards Duke Energy relocation.
Right now, we've got a $3.6 million construction contract, roughly, round numbers, $300,000 for a change order, and then whatever the engineering fee is, and... That could easily be 20%, that could be $600,000 or $700,000. And, so we'll definitely be into our dollars, and if the, if the utility line is over half a million, then we'll, relocation of utilities is over half a million, then all of our $600,000 will be, be gone. That's, that's what we got it for, but that's the cap, so... I'm pleased that we, we had, we've got a low bidder, this is a reputable firm, and I recommend we award the, the contract for the Joan Sausage Road, TIP number U-6099 to the ST Wooton Corporation with a bid of $3,600,214,000.
Second.
If you may, second, I'll in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Yes. Thank you.
As planned and promised, we are here tonight just to formally present the contract for the rewriting of the town's Unified Development Ordinance. Ms. Cindy Sportskopf from Stewart is here tonight as well, in case you have any questions for her. But just to outline what is in your packet, we do have the actual contract on pages 117 to 128 of your package. On page 117, the contract, section 1.4 incorporates by reference the scope of work, which is found on pages 106 to 116. At this point, I think we're agreeable between staff and Stewart, but certainly, we would entertain any questions that you might have. Once again, we are looking at this being about a two-year project to get everything rewritten and up to, up to standards.
Questions, comments? Looks like a pretty thorough contract to me. I'm ready to approve it. Make motion.
Jeff, I would, the only comment I'd make is, I don't have a problem with the contract. Regarding the, the project, I liked the fact we got a number of meetings, and keeping those meetings close together, and keeping the steering committee engaged, it's, will make the end product a lot easier to, to approve. I won't be a part of that approval, but just from experience, having those meetings, we don't, we don't lose, we forget, we don't forget from one to the other what we did the last time, and you know where I'm coming from.
We do have openings on the steering committee.
Maybe my wife will volunteer for that.
Jeff, were you going to say anything about the budget amendment? This is, I guess, something we've, is new that we're doing, we're trying to tie some of these budget amendments with the project.
Yes, I forgot that, that was not in the consent package. So, yes, there is, when we did add, as noted during the work session, we did add a few public participation elements to the overall scope, as well as expanding the time for some of the public open houses, as well as application development, once we're done, so we can implement right-of-way. So, it did come in a little bit higher than what we had originally estimated, but there is a budget amendment in your package as part of this as well, for an additional $25,000, bringing the project total up to 225.
So, we need a motion to that effect to approve, or actually, just approve budget amendment for $25,000, is that right?
Correct, and then to authorize Mr. Dickerson to execute the contract.
Any other comment, discussion? I recommend we authorize the manager to actually contract and approve a budget amendment for $25,000.
Second.
If you may, second, I'll in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff.
Immediate reports. Manager reports.
All right, manager reports, you have Garner info in your agenda packet, so if there's any questions about that. Then, item number two, the Woodland Road resurfacing update, I know there were some questions about the resurfacing of that stretch of road that had not been done yet, and we reached out to Joey Hopkins, and he just reaffirmed what we had been told before, that it's part of the active resurfacing plan, and they hope to have that resurfaced by mid to late spring of 2020. That's the latest we heard on that. We put together the NC DOT project delay letter as requested by town council, I think most of you have already signed that and have all the signatures, and so we will get that out in the mail tomorrow, just expressing our concern about the projects being delayed in Garner, and, and just hoping that they'll get those back in line, and we have a list of prioritized projects in there.
And Mr. Dickerson, while you're on that point, I'd like to add that just last week, the Secretary, Transportation Secretary mentioned that he's working diligently to pull at least 400 projects back online next year. 400 of the 900 that were ceased, suspended. That's good news.
And then we have some, a new element that has come up with our Vandoor Springs sidewalk project that involves the City of Raleigh wanting to replace the 12-inch water line along Vandoor Springs Road, so I'll let Mr. Hodges elaborate on that, give you some details.
The City of Raleigh is trying to be proactive in replacing water lines whenever there's construction projects going on and the need is there. We are already doing some work with water line for this project that is part of our project scope. City of Raleigh wants to replace the remaining, the rest of the water line there. They will reimburse us 100% for doing the work, as well as for designing the work, but we're going to need to amend our contract with our engineering firm to design the work, and so we just need to get an informal okay from council that it's okay for us to go ahead and proceed with amending that contract, knowing that it is all 100% reimbursable.
Question. So, we're talking the Vandoor Springs Spring Drive sidewalk, or the Vandoor Springs from Timber Drive to Tiffany Circle side, or...
Vandoor from Timber Drive to Tiffany Circle.
Okay, so it's not the Spring Drive section in front of the Catholic Church and the Employees' Credit Union, it's not that section?
Correct. Now, if Chris has got anything to add to that, he can...
Yes, it is the one, Tiffany Circle. Basically, if you had recall, we had done some test holes out there, and that was one of the, one of the things that we were looking at that had sort of delayed that project. After looking at it further, it turns out that the existing water line that runs out there along Vandoor Springs is a, a sea line, and that's, that's one of the types of lines that Raleigh's been very diligent at trying to get rid of due to degradation issues and concerns. So, we were already having to do a lot of, we had some storm drainage crossings, that was the reason we were doing the test holes, was to make sure we weren't going to have conflicts. Turns out, we do have some conflicts, and we were, so we're already going to be fixing three or four sections where we have storm lines crossing. They're looking at it, they say, well, if you're going to do that, let's just go ahead and do the whole thing from end to end, we'll pay for the remainder and call it a day.
Be added on to the project, if those of you listening, the sidewalk from the fire station, that Timber Drive down to Tiffany Circle, and that's a project that will hopefully be awarded next spring, and construction starts sometime next year and be finished this time next year?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a, a good move, going from asbestos cement pipe to, it'll be ductile iron pipe, that's a, and if you didn't, by the time construction's completed, we will have wanted to have done it, because we'll, we'll make it leak, it just can't stand much construction activity over, or around it.
Yeah, and a lot of times, you can, you can have, it can have, what I've been told from the people in the utilities department, that they don't just tend to break in one little spot, sometimes they can, it can go in each direction along the pipe, so if we're there, it makes sense to go ahead and take care of it.
That pipe's been in the ground more than 40 years.
You can give a boozer, just a thumbs up?
Just a, just a thumbs up approval, if that's okay.
I'll agree on that.
And, Mr. Singleton, to your, to your question, original question about sort of the confusion or the question between the two Vandoor Springs projects, we are running into that a lot internally as well, so what's, what we are trying to do is, you will hear us refer to the Spring Drive-Vandoor project primarily as Spring Drive, and we know it does include a small segment of Vandoor Springs, but to eliminate internal and external confusion, we're referring to that one primarily as Spring Drive, and the other project we're referring to as Vandoor Springs, to try to eliminate some of the confusion, because through staff and finance and everywhere else, we were having similar, similar types of confusions.
And that, that contract has been awarded?
Yes, it has.
Notice to proceed with today.
Good.
All right, that concludes the manager reports.
Start with the council, I'll start with Mr. Vance.
Well, I'd like to hats off to the Parks and Rec Department for having a quick response to the adverse weather relative to the execution of the trick-or-treat trails, changing it from the park to the G-PAC and Avery, Avery Street Recreation Center. Hats off to that quick response and a very successful event. Still have, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Manager.
Yes, sir, I have three things. One is, in the October 18th issue of the Triangle Business Journal, there was an article about, let's see, what is it, the name of the Improved Nature located in the Old Wind Dixie Building over on Vandoor Springs Road, and its success, and it's being offered on the New York Stock Exchange, but the reference here said that it was founded in 2015 and operates out of the tiny town of Garner. So, I think maybe we need to make a call to TBJ and remind them that 32,000 is not a tiny town. Let's hope it was an oversight, I don't know, but it was a poor choice of words. Secondly, I noticed that several of the fire hydrants around town are in bad need of being repainted or cleaned, and/or both, so is that something we, how do we handle that? Do we approach the City of Raleigh, or ask the fire chief to approach them, or what?
We can talk to the fire chief, I think Raleigh has an inspection program, and they paint them certain color depending on when they pass inspection, but I will confer with the, the fire chief and see if he can make some contacts.
Some of them look really bad. And the third thing is that I mentioned in the past about having new employees to be introduced to us at council, and I'd like to, I'd like us to create a plan for that with, that perhaps within so many weeks of them coming on board that we would get to meet them. It occurred to me recently that the only person, the two people I recognize now who work in the Finance Department are David and Donna Weigle, and that's it. I don't know anybody else. So, how would we go about doing that, Mr. Manager?
Is this for all new employees, regardless of position and...
For a tiny town, why not?
Work hours and those type of things, okay.
That shouldn't be a problem for a tiny town.
But we're not a tiny town.
We have much more problem than you think.
Yeah, we could try to coordinate that with the employees, I mean, because we have different work schedules for some, so they might have to make a special trip to come back in.
I don't want inconvenience, the whole, my whole purpose is to know who, who work for us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do our best to get as many of them as we can to come in to meet you at some public forum.
And I know that's going to be an ongoing thing, of course, there is turnover, but I would truly like to, to know who the folks are that do the work behind the scenes. That's all.
Have no reports tonight, Mr. Mayor. Ray?
Yes, I'd like to ask either Mr. Dickerson, Mr. Hodges, or Mr. Roy Lance, since we approved the portion of the Vandoor, excuse me, the Joan Sausage Road project, just to update to let people out there know that the town has authorized a contract with a design firm for the remainder of Joan Sausage Road from the end of this project, south toward the intersection with Garner Road, and that firm will design a four-lane, five-foot sidewalk, curb and gutter, match up to the section, to and through that intersection, and when that right-of-way gets acquired. And then they'll do a conceptual plan of taking Joan Sausage Road over to Highway 70... Sausage Road over to Highway 70, most likely under the railroad. So for the folks who want to know, that's a project the town has undertaken to pay 1.2, 1.3 million dollars for that firm to do that. The reason we are going this route is we hope to acquire some grant funding to do that project, which will cost several million dollars. As you see, this one cost over $5 million, and this is a longer section, so we're talking about a section that can cost 10 to 15 million dollars potentially, and so we have to take the first steps, we've talked about this before, signing with the firm, get it designed, and then you go through the grant process to get hopefully funding, like we're doing with the traffic circle on Hebron Church, White Oak Road, so forth, so just let the public know Joan Sausage Road is not going to all be completed at one time. And you say, well, why not? Well, the reason why not is 10 to 15 million dollars, that's why not. It takes time, it takes planning, it takes getting assistance, so.
Just a slight, slight clarification. You had mentioned that likely underground, they're leaving their options open, and looking at above-ground options also.
Okay, above or below ground the railroad, but some way to get a conceptual plan above or under. They do not want any more at-grade crossings, so that's a concept, and that plan will cost a lot more than doing Joan Sausage Road from the Amazon Project to Garner Road. That's another grant plan, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. We'll go under that bridge, either way, haha, sorry. That's all I have, thank you.
Only a couple of comments, one legitimate, the following up on Gray's comment and comment by staff about HDR doing the preliminary design on the extension and realignment of Joan Sausage Road, it, looking at some alternatives are creating some potential realignments that affect some properties, and I talked with John informally about this earlier, and just simply for the, those property owners along that route that obviously will have an interest in it, is to encourage as much communication when they have something that can be done in order to avoid misinformation being out there and worrying under death, and it's a, but that's what happens when you're doing preliminary design, it moves around. It takes a while to get settled in its bid, road bid, and so for the benefit of folks listening, that when they have something that they want to talk to you about, they'll talk to you. And the not-so-worthwhile comment, I'm going to choose tomorrow morning to sleep in, while some of you might be up early.
That all? Mr. Attorney, I have something. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318, 1183, to discuss several items of potential litigation.
Potential litigation?
Litigation, yes, sir. Yeah, we're going into closed session.
Move, we go into closed session per the statute stated by the attorney.
Second? All in favor?
Council met in closed session and discussed several items of possible litigation, and the council gave instructions to the attorney. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second? Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.